...the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda. If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the bathroom hall. Seeing none, thank you. We will now proceed now into the audience. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Beasley, ladies and gentlemen, it is our pleasure to open our board recognitions this evening with the Marshall Elementary School's Soaring Eagle Honor Course under the direction of Ms. Rosemary White.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Soaring Eagle Word of Good Grade Honor Course, and tonight we will do a Honor Forces medley for you, saluting all of our veterans and those wonderful veterans of the armed services. So we enjoy. Thank you.
The United States Army, over hill, over down, we will take the dusty truck and the Kaysans go rolling along. In the house, in their shops, out to Mars, to ride the clouds, and the Kaysans go rolling along. In his high, high knee, in the field of artillery, shout out your numbers like a trump, two, three, wherever we go, you always go, and the Army goes rolling along. The United States Marines, from the heart of Montezuma, to the shores of Tripoli, we will fight our blood, cheese, and apples, through the air on land and sea. First to life, for pride and freedom, and to give our honor clean. We are proud to claim the title of United States Marines. The United States Navy. Fingers away, my voice, fingers away. Farewell to calling swords, we'll sail at break of day, 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 through her blessed night ashore, hail to the bow. Until we meet once more, they wish we were happy when he's home. The United States All-Stars. We're always ready for the fall, we can blaze our dust in the knee. To serve this storm and pounding, and I shall arm birds and ski. Semper Proctus is our guide, our pledge, our motto too. To fight is to save, to fight and die, I will guard, we are for you. The United States Air Force, off we go, into the battle yonder, climbing high is the sun. Here we come, soon to meet our thunder, and our horns give a gun. Tell the guys that the name of wonder, our waters are broad. We live in vain, but we'll yell and play, and nothing's stopped the U.S. Air Force.
Please, for the last few seconds.
Let us lead this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see, by the thunder we light? What so proudly we hailed, at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright shines and bright stars, through the perilous night? For so bravely we swam, through so heavenly streaming? And the rock is trembling, the stars are singing. In the gloom and the night, their flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much for having us. Today we are the Mighty Soaring Eagle Honor Course at Fulton Marshall Elementary School.
Everyone, if you look up here on the count of three, one, two, and three, we're gonna take one more, one, two, and three. Thank you all.
All the parents and friends who are here who supported this great group of girls and guys, would please stand so we can say thank you for being here. Once again, it's Marshall Elementary School, and it's the Soaring Eagle Honor Course under the direction of Ms. Rosemary White. For our first recognition this evening, we invite Lamique Agnew with the Clayton County Educators Association, please come forward. In addition, Ms. Lauren Allen of Arnold, if he is here, Mr. Correll from Loro Middle School, Mr. Michael Powell from Eddie White Middle School, Sarah Stevens from Roberts Middle School, and Dr. Ebony Lee and Ms. Victoria Betford, who are representing English Language Arts Learning, if you could come forward, please. In January of this year, students representing forty-eight elementary and middle schools across Clayton County Public Schools competed for the honor of Top Speller in the District during the 2019 District Spelling Meet. It took seventeen rounds and more than two-hundred-and-forty words to crown the District's Champion. The winning word, Gibson. The annual district's honor be sponsored by Clayton County Education Association. Tonight, we honor the students who finished course through fourth in this event. Our fourth place finisher from Millie Roberts Middle School, Rosalie Alyssia. Please come forward. Our third place finisher from Eddie White Middle School, Kira Day, seventh grader. Our second place finisher from Loro Middle School, Simon Tran, an eighth grade student. And our first place finisher from J.W. Arnold Elementary, a fifth grader, Hummels Ottensohn. And now we're going to do pictures.
Yeah, alright, on the far end, if you could scoot in a little this way. Everyone right here on three, one, two, and three, gonna take one more, one, two, and three. Thank you all.
Thank you. For our next recognition, would the chain financial officer's individuals, please come forward. Tonight, we honor the District's Division of Business Services, who has received two prestigious international recognitions honoring the best practices exhibited by the District. The first award was presented to the District by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is considered a highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting by a governmental agency. The second honor... The second honor was presented by the Association of School Business Officials International. The organization awarded Clayton County Public Schools a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report for the 2017 district year. In presenting this award, ASBO International has affirmed that the District met or exceeded the award's program's highest standards for financial reporting and accountability. I would ask all individuals who are part of our Business Services Division, who are present in the audience, to please stand for proper recognition.
Alright, everyone, right here on the count of three. One, two, and three, gonna take one more, one, two, and three. Thank you.
With Dr. Sandra Nunez, Dr. Angelo Carter, and Ms. Trina Smith, please come forward. Tonight, we have a proclamation for Exceptional Children's Week. Children with exceptionality, or whereas children with exceptionalities may be identified as children having all levels of intellectual abilities, rare creative talents, mental processing deficits, hearing impairment, orthopedic impairment, speech impairment, or who have emotional disabilities who are learning disabled, and who for one or more of these reasons require special education and related services, and whereas educators have developed instructional and educational materials and programs enabling individuals with exceptionalities to develop academic, social, and vocational skills to use and cope in with today's world, and whereas the disabling tendency of an exceptionality can be mitigated by properly trained professionals in conjunction with community awareness, knowledge, interest in, and understanding of exceptional individuals, and whereas being consistent with democratic ideas, it is essential that all children, regardless of their differences, receive an equal opportunity to an appropriate education. And whereas the Department of Exceptional Students in Clayton County Public Schools promotes the advancement and education of all exceptional infants, toddlers, children, and youth, has helped and will continue to help make advancements and awareness in the field of special education, now therefore, I, Dr. J. Beasley, Superintendent of Clayton County Public Schools, to hereby proclaim March 4th through 8th, 2019, as Exceptional Children's Week in Clayton County, and encourage our stakeholders to educate themselves and gain a better understanding of the needs and capabilities of exceptional children and youth, as well as the programs and the people that support them in our schools and our community. We would ask any member of the Exceptional Children's Staff, they would please stand as we recognize this outstanding group.
Alright, everyone, right here on the count of three, one, two, and three, gonna take one more, one, two, and three. Thank you.
Our final recognition of the none is the fact that the state of Georgia and the Georgia School Boards Association selects a week during the month of March for its School Board Appreciation Week. The week of March the eighteenth through the twenty-second is School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. It is a time to express appreciation to those public-spirited community citizens who are dedicated to educating every child to give her her fullest potential and committed to leadership for student achievement. We thank each of those who are standing before us this evening for your dedicated service to benefit the children of Clayton County.
Excuse me. Alright, everyone, if you look up here, alright, here on the count of three, one, two, and three, gonna take one more, one, two, and three. Thank you all.
Let's begin with our recognition session.
Okay, we will proceed on with our agenda. Um, there will be your executive session tonight. Next on the agenda is public participation. Um, the Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation, and will hear any interested individual pursuant to the guidelines outlined by Policy BCPI. Members of the public will not be allowed to discuss individual personnel issues or confidential student matters. Speakers must identify themselves and topics before speaking. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak, and time may not be yielded from one speaker to another. Board members will not respond to comments from speakers. The chairman may make major response as appropriate. Issues requiring practical action by the board may be added to their future agenda. Issues that may need to be addressed by the administration will be duly noted. Abusive language and or personal attacks will not be remedied. Individuals addressing the board must at all times adhere to the civility policy. Alright, I'm gonna call out the first person, and that is Sowana, is that John Dear?
John Dear.
John Dear?
Sowana John Dear, Clayton County. Why ask why? The good doctor would have me to believe asking questions is unhealthy. And come to think of it, even though it's not a true medical opinion, I would agree with your diagnosis, Dr. Beasley. I am sick, sick and tired of being a taxpayer in Clayton County and watching my tax dollars be wasted and frivolously spent with the approval of this board. I am sick and tired of being told this Board of Elected Officials is working in the best interest of all stakeholders. This is the same board who admitted that they didn't realize we were in a deficit of over forty million dollars, and then sought to correct their oversight and dereliction by passing a budget that caused me, the taxpayer, to have a max out military, that caused me, the taxpayer and parent of three Clayton County students, to send my children to overcrowded classrooms. Why ask why? Because this board, who asked me to put my trust in their decision-making skills, just unanimously voted to amend the contract of its superintendent to increase the monthly travel allowance and simultaneously take away any transparency as to how the superintendent spends my tax dollars. I'm just sick to know that this same board thought it not robbery to write a resolution to increase their own salary for the tremendous work they done, for an increase of more than fifty percent, might I add, but thought nothing of the very people whose salary you froze a few short months ago, thought nothing of the extra money I gave in taxes, thought nothing of the children sitting on top of each other in large classes. Perhaps the good doctor might diagnose you with a case of ambulature. Why ask why? Inquiring taxpayers, me, want to know, how does this purported transparency work? Please have confidence in our ability to do right and don't worry about the particulars? Obviously, because we assume that our intent, words, and actions match like two lucky shoes. I am sick of feeling like I've been had, taken, hooded, bamboozled, led astray, and run amok. You put your trust in the good doctor, but his fit just ain't good enough. I'm trying desperately to get well, but the medicine you all prescribe is a hard pill to swallow. Large credit sizes increase tax bills, unexplained deficits, self-resciring raises, and blank checks. I feel like the only thing you're trying to cure me of is having money in my pocket. But maybe I need a second opinion. Perhaps I was misdiagnosed.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Congress Jean Poney.
Can you make sure everyone is clear for the record? I'm Dr. Beasley. If anybody can hear, that's my name. If I'm heard, it's Dr. Beasley.
To the board, Vice Chair, Dr. Beasley. Clayton News, March fourteenth, two thousand and nine.
Um, I'm gonna ask anyone in the audience, please do not make any comments while she's speaking. I need to make sure that everybody is quiet so we can hear what she's saying. Thank you.
Can my time start?
Yeah, keep on.
Clayton News, March fourteenth, two thousand and nine. Board Member Jesse Gory is quoted as saying, "I just want a superintendent who knows what they need to know, and I can just rubber stamp everything he says." Dr. Anderson, you're quoted as saying, "I want a superintendent we can trust." This was said during the firing of Superintendent John Thompson. Then the board appointed Dr. Edwin Heathley. Well, then the board, well, not the whole board, it was Dr. Lika Anderson, Ms. Mary Baker, Ms. Ophelia Burrows, and Ms. Judy Johnson, who appointed Ms. Laveena Jackson. She leaves, and we have a deficit of over forty million dollars. Did the board ever once have a meeting with business services, these fine people that just spoke up, that just stood up? They said they actually knew the county was spending too much money. They, you are in control of the budget, but never ask the right questions to the right people. Right now, I stand before you with a bill from Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. One test for my border after insurance will cost seven hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents I have to pay out of pocket. I'm that person who's bringing home less money because you froze my salary, you went up on my property taxes to fix a problem I didn't cause. You put my two children in overcrowded classes. We do have the fate of fifty-four, fifty-four thousand students and the livelihood of several thousand teachers in your hands. Have you found the right superintendent that you can rubber stamp his decisions and trust? Ms. Gory mentioned in the last board meeting that the fund balance was looking good. Who's that? The teachers and the students. You are making some divisions, some decisions that feel like a slap in the face to us. Allowing a trip to France, slap in the face. Asking for a raise in a pension for yourselves, slap in the face. Giving Dr. Beasley a thousand dollars a month for transportation with no receipts required, twelve thousand dollars a year? Y'all ready? Slap in the face. Not guaranteed we will see all the money from the governor? Slap in the face. Oh, and we know that she put the firm loan raise back in the contract, including applicable emergencies declared by the governor of Georgia. So, are you surprised that we can't, the public, can't rubber stamp or trust decisions that you all are making right now? So, are you surprised that we can't, the public, can't rubber stamp or trust decisions that you all are making right now? Well, our faces are a little...
Next, we have Colleen Canty. I have Colleen Canty, is that correct?
Oh, okay. Um, good evening, just coming here to speak to you all on behalf of Clayton County Schools. I'm a parent of a child at Riverdale Middle School. Um, it's very emotional for me to be here today. If you all have not visited the school system, these kids are on top of each other. We're having three to four fights a day. We're getting teachers, they're attacked. When one officer at the school is dangerous, when you walk the highways, it's dangerous. We're having teachers at the school hair pulled out of their head. Student, no, this is... Oh, okay. Class sizes, too big, they're not learning. I had to email you to get a meeting, a conference with the teacher so that my child, that is ADHD, could get in the right classes at the right sizes. Without calling you, it would not have been done. They did not have my child test scores current up to date until I had to call you. Riverdale Middle School was the school that I'm speaking of, that I know about, that is falling. We have dangers up there. We had to change class this little time twice last week so that all the kids could not be outside by themselves. And they were going to one resource officer there. And they went running off the tree, got the body, parents, and students. It's dangerous up there. The class sizes are too big. One teacher cannot handle those kids up there. They're not learning. We need Dick the Hill to be up there to run the schools just like he run the jail in order for these kids to learn. We have blackmail, we have two strikes against them, the male and the black. They're not gonna make it with the education that they're not being provided. These teachers cannot teach because they have to break up fights all day long. All day long. Bullying, it happens. Why are the administrators covering it up? I don't know. But it's every parent doesn't speak for their child. Every child doesn't have a voice. You all who come out to the schools, pop up, don't announce your business. Come and see what's happening. Three to four fights a day, Dr. Beasley, that's ridiculous. I can't even work. I'm at work where my child can make it home. Because you go outside, they have a pole ride standing on my side. It's about different kids over there, playing, jumping, picking each other. There's not enough teachers to run to the kids. And it's dangerous for one teacher. I know you heard, teacher got hit in the classroom. Cone tail pulled out her hair, another teacher, knife pulled out, and him in the classroom. All this is at Riverdale Middle. I can't speak for the others, but I can speak. We are asking and pleading for your help. These teachers need money and we need more teachers. We're losing this third teacher, okay?
Back without. Thank you, Miss Canty. I appreciate you. Um, next, we have... Next, we have Mrs. Natasha Randy.
Good evening, Board. Um, Chairwoman of the Board, Vice Chairwoman of the Board, Superintendent, community at large. I stand before you to oppose the resolution to provide a sixty percent pay raise for the school board members from a thousand a month to sixteen hundred a month. To quote this superintendent from his message on Friday, March the first, "We appreciate all teachers and various employees that remain committed and dedicated to our children as we tighten our belts by implementing the pay freeze for the school year that has been at the forefront of my mind as we can, as we prepare for our fiscal year twenty budget." A sixty percent pay raise is not tightening our budgets, I'm sorry, tightening our budgets. Teachers have tightened our budgets. We have struggled with increased class sizes, even though the data shows that large class sizes, um, result in decreased learning outcomes. Our medical benefits went up, our pay was still frozen, we had paid more out of pocket. We have suffered through this pay, pay, pay freeze, and we have been punished. When leave without pay, if we call out sick, regardless of having worked in a sick time, teachers are coming into these buildings and they're working sick. Our ways have been smashed. But it appears that the board is letting their belts loose. Allow us a sixty percent pay raise. The mention of a pension, a thousand dollar car allowance on top of the three thousand dollar salary and the housing allowance for the superintendent, again with no receipts or accountability. How is that transparent, Dr. Beasley? How is that transparent? School board papers. You should want transparency. What you managed to write is that the superintendent shall not be required to document such expenses. This board is not acting nor surrendering the best business of the teachers, the students, the parents, or the taxpayers of Clayton County. The resolution for the raise should be broken down or should be included to reflect that the board will take a twenty percent reduction in pay to eight hundred dollars a month while this Clayton County Public School budget is in a deficit. That is what type of thing I built for this life. And in the words, and the words, "school board pension", those words should never be mentioned in this room again. This is an elected service position, not elected, in which myself position. It's public service, serve the public, not yourself. Now, there's talk of the money that was promised by Governor Kemp will be absorbed in the district. I want you to think about it, if you do not pass that money along, that's been earmarked for teachers, how that's gonna look in this community to these teachers who are making these sacrifices every day in our classrooms to keep these classrooms sustained. We need the money, we need our raise, we need our bump, we need it all back. We cannot continue to bounce the budget on teachers' backs. Thank you.
The next on the agenda is, um, Darlene Johnson.
Good evening, Dr. Beasley, Board members. My name is Darlene Carr. I want to stress the decision that was made at the last meeting to change the dress code in school. That, to me, was a huge mistake, mainly because having a dress code in the school system is the first line of discipline. The school board already struggled and could not even keep this practice up to the point where the kids will come to school in uniform as required. That discipline eliminates a few problems, starting with bullying. It eliminates bullying because when you have children and knowing that we're a tier one and a title one in school means we're poor. Our, our incomes are here, our families are struggling to dress these children. And to, to remove the dress code to where now you're gonna have issues of those that have and have nots. Now you've got kids coming to school who are going to be bullied because they can't dress. I keep up with all this high fashion of the few who are able to. That creates bullying. What's the issue we don't need? We already have discipline problems in the school, we're having fight. Now we're gonna have to deal with kids coming to school with their pants sagging, with their bellies out, eyelashes, weeds, weeds, breasts out, all these additional things. They don't complement the, the inviting for these children to learn. We're struggling because our schools are failing, our children are not being educated, there are too many of them in the classroom. As you just heard, there are a lot of fights. But that code, that dress code is the first line of discipline and helps the discipline in the classroom. And I'm a part that you all will remove the dress code to accommodate a few. What about the hundreds of thousands that, or if you have a fifty thousand, that need to be in uniform simply to bring down some of the bullying, some of the self-esteem? Helps those children with self-esteem, whose families cannot afford to dress them in Gucci? And all of those name brands, they, at least it helps with their self-esteem if everybody's doing the same thing. Now you've got hair colors that are signifying gangs, we got fights, overcrowded classrooms, and I just believe that removing the dress code was a huge mistake to have, have happened in the school system with as many discipline problems as we're currently facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Next, on the agenda will be, um, Mrs. Garber.
Dr. Beasley and members of the board. I come to speak with a full heart, but with an empty head is without merit. I was instructed that I could not ask you questions directly. At this point, I don't have to. These other folks out here have made mention of all the questions that I would ask this board and you serve the leadership of our educational system. I voted to increase the tax mileage rate to give our children a better education through smaller class sizes. I asked that my tax dollars, I was willing to pay, to have smaller class sizes. As I say now, the class, I pay the higher mileage rate, but my class sizes have been increased. Dr. Beasley, you are at the highest pay of the metropolitan area. People in your position, I would ask you, sir, and the board, to make sure that our teachers, with your grandiose ideas of elevating our educational system, your ideas are good, but without smaller class sizes and higher pay for the teachers, your ideas are going nowhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Garber. Next is going to be the D E S compliance specialist.
Good evening, Clayton County Public Board, Dr. Beasley. Previously, there was a letter composed in the act of transparency. I personally do not believe that this is the appropriate time to read that letter, um, due to some contents that are in it. So, I am speaking on behalf of the Department of Educational Students Compliance Specialist.
Could you please stand?
We have been reduced from a two hundred and twenty workday to a two hundred and twenty workday. Um, two, two hundred and twenty, two hundred workday. And all of the things that go into that, I do not think that this is the appropriate place. So, with all due respect, um, there have been individuals that have reached out and they have not received a response. So, I am asking that you meet with us in a more private, um, setting so we can discuss this.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'm gonna give Dr. Beasley a chance to, um, respond. Thank you, Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Our first response to the D E S compliance specialist, they own the procedure, I would expect them to follow the procedure. The Deputy Superintendent for Students Support Services, if there's a request to meet with me, that stays processed, everyone is expected to follow. So, Dr. Lenes, I would, I would ask that you, um, touch base with your department. Relative to the dress code change, just to make sure everyone is clear, it's only the high schools and of course, our magnet and, uh, choice program will continue with their dress codes as well as our paid aid students. And to be very clear with everyone, dress expectations are still in place and we will implement those dress expectations. Relative to the Riverdale Middle School, I just visited Riverdale Middle School the other day. And while I was there, honestly, I walked the halls and I didn't see any fights or odds affair. But I've been a high school principal for high schools, I know that, uh, fights do occur at times. But I just want you to know, we have a deputy superintendent over school leadership who's willing to hear any concerns and we have safety and security to address anything related to games, discipline, et cetera. But our community should know that in all the areas in which we monitor discipline issues, our students have shown a decrease in all the top ten behavior offenses that we are monitoring from year to year. It doesn't mean that it's perfect, listen to me people, listen to me. It doesn't mean that it's perfect, but we are seeing a de- decrease. Now, if there's a particular school that we need to address, it's always good to know. Because what I don't like to do is address an issue with a principal and that's not their issue. Let's go to that particular school and we will address that particular school. Relative to the budget, we've been very clear in teacher forums, community forums, and I'll be very clear tonight. The governor wants his increase in whatever format it comes, is finalized and communicated. We've been working offline and I've shared this on numerous platforms. We've been working offline to build a budget as we strengthen our fiscal position and it is strengthening to consider not only is the governor's increase, but an additional percent. We, we, we just can't figure out and finalize that until we get his data, his numbers. So, I want to encourage everyone, I know sometimes we want to create an issue for whatever reason, give us a chance to finish the budget process. Finish the budget process. And, sir, to your point, I'm not the highest paid superintendent. Mr. Will Banks and Dr. Costarfin aren't the highest paid superintendents, but I wouldn't mind being where they are, I'll be very honest with you. But I'm not the highest paid superintendent. I am not. But whatever, sir, whatever I'm paid, I can assure you that this district is going to get services from this superintendent. Oftentimes, well beyond, well beyond the time that we're compensated for. So, I just want everyone to know. Now, relative to, so everyone will know, relative to the amendment to my contract, my contract had a thousand dollars in there for the third year. Since they amended it, they just went ahead and identified that one thousand dollars to continue immediately. But it's the same funds that were already in my contract. So, I just want everyone to be clear, let's not create an issue. And I don't want this, and this board, I want to be very clear as a superintendent, we're not going to create an adversarial us versus them situation in this school system. This board will get a recommendation at the appropriate time from this superintendent and this staff about an increase that will be a beneficial increase for all employees, teachers included. This board, this board, and I know I've heard many comments about what this board did and this board this, this board, I'm not giving account of what happened before I became superintendent, but this board, since I've been superintendent, has been very clear in questioning everything about our district's finances. We've been very clear and we are strengthening our fiscal position. Let's make sure that if we're going to say something about our school system and that is the case, every board meeting, we receive a fiscal or financial report. We, those of us who are in the school system, parents, community at all, we should read those reports. We should come and be informed. So, I want to be very clear, we will not create an adversarial situation. We are here to work together, but this board, this board is counting on us, the staff, to ensure that when we bring a budget recommendation, that it is grounded in information, it's accurate and it is sustainable. It is sustainable. And my commitment, being a very fiscally prudent individual, is to ensure that that is the case. We will bring a very responsible budget, but I assure you, teachers and all, that the budget will reflect an increase. Now, where will that, how much will that increase be? I don't know today because I've got to get the governor's final information and how he will present that. Will the governor change the teacher's schedule? Will the governor change the teacher's schedule, which means that the increase will have to be provided every year? Or will the governor give a one-time allocation, which means that it will just be for one year? We're waiting on those details. So it's all about you. Let's make sure we get an understanding and that we're informed. We're going to make the right decision, but we're going to make an informed decision. We're going to make an accurate decision. We're going to make an intelligent decision, one that is grounded on the facts as they are. And so I want to encourage everyone. Let's not make this personal. Let's respect. And that's why I share what my name is. I appreciate, I know your intention, the good doctor, whatever that is. But my name is Dr. Beasley because I don't dare let a student disrespect a teacher. Nor should we allow as professionals ourselves to disrespect one another. Let's all be very mindful of that. We all have a right to our opinion and you should voice your opinion. And I commit, don't give you that voice to opinion. But let's be informed, let's be professional, let's always be respectful and allow the process to be fulfilled. It will be fulfilled. We will bring to this board a recommendation, a tender budget to adopt during the March work session, and we're working toward this. As you well know, you're keeping up with the legislative session. We're waiting on final budgets from the Capitol. Once we get that information, we'll be able to finalize again the details of our recommendation. So patient, everyone. Know that we are working and this board is working on end your best interest. And we will not grant a recommendation that is not your best interest. We acknowledge your hard work. We know where you've been. We know you've hung in here with us. Give us a chance to finish the process so you can see that we do exactly what we say we're going to do. We're committed to supporting all of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. Next, we move on to our recognition of public officials. I don't have any public officials signing, or any, if there are any in the audience at this time. If so, you can stand and if not, we will move on. Next, we have our announcements, Dr. Burrows.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, District administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of March. I would like to ask that all Clayton County Public Schools associated workers who are in our community, please stand as I read the following announcement. Thank you. The week of March, the 3rd through the 9th, 2019, marks the celebration of School Social Work Week. With the theme of "Love Be In Now," school social workers across the country will be highlighted, will be highlighted, will highlight their vital role in helping students to meet the academic, social, and emotional challenges on the road to becoming successful and productive young adults. Please join us as we thank these dedicated employees for their tireless efforts to support all children throughout our school district. This week is also Exceptional Children's Week with the theme of "Building Blocks For Successful Students." The Clayton County Department of Exceptional Students will conclude its service of this week with the District-wide Parent Expo on Saturday, March 9th, at Riverdale High School in Riverdale. Activities will be available for children and parents, guardians, including information on services, supports, Medicaid, vocational rehabilitation, colleges, careers, accommodations, and technology. The DES Spring Expo will begin at 9:00 A.M. Throughout the month of March, the district is celebrating Arts in Our Schools Month with a variety of educational events for students at all levels. A highlight will take place on Wednesday, March 20th, as Arts Advocacy Day. This will take place at Foreman Art Center in Jonesboro. Community stakeholders can pre-register for this event on the district's website. Clayton County Public Schools will celebrate the class of 2019 scholar athletes with the reception and program on Tuesday, March 5th. Celebration will be held at Foreman Art Center in Jonesboro. The reception will begin at 6:45 P.M. and the program will start at 7:15 P.M. The fifth annual community resource career hosted by the Clayton County Public Schools Social Worker Project will be held on Thursday, March 7th, from 2:30 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. at Soft Lake Mall in Laurel. The purpose of the affair is to provide information to Clayton County families and district personnel about the vast and varied community sources and services available to the families and students of our county. The theme of this year's resource year is "Teaming Up For Success," spelled out S-U-C-C-E-S-S, an acronym for strengthening and the utilization of comprehensive, comprehensive community and enrichment services for students. Superintendent and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Marcy JDC, will host the fifth and final critical conversation meeting of the 2018-19 school year. The meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, at the Riverdale Thompson, which is located at 7210 Church Street in Riverdale. The meeting is scheduled to begin at 6:00 P.M. and will be available for viewing via livestream on the CCES website. The fifth annual exhibition of art by students of Clayton County Public Schools will be at the High Museum of Art in Atlanta on Monday, March 18th and will continue through Sunday, April 21st. There will be a special reception highlighting the work of our students on Sunday, March 24th, from 1:00 P.M. to 3:00 P.M. The exhibition is exhibited to include, expected to include, the works of exhibit as a part of all county art competition. On Saturday, March 23rd, the STEM Expo sponsored by the district's Division of Career, Technical, and Agricultural Education will be held at Mondays Mill High School in Jonesboro. Featured guest speaker is Monkala Almar, a 14-year-old entrepreneur who is expected to be fairly late in order. The expo will begin at 9:00 A.M. All Clayton County primary elementary schools will conduct kindergarten registration the weeks of March 25th through 29th, and April 22nd through 26th. Parents may register students from 8:30 to 11:00 A.M. and from 12:00 noon to 12:30 P.M. Under state law, students must be five years old by September 1st of this year to register. Please go to the district's website for more information and a list of required documents for registration. On Saturday, March 23rd, a board Kansas City kind of retreat will be held at Professional Learning Center on Down Creek Road in Jonesboro. The retreat is scheduled to begin at 8:30 A.M. The March 4th work session is scheduled for Monday, March 14th at 6:00 P.M. The meeting will be held here in the boardroom. On Thursday, March 28th, beginning at 9:00 A.M., the district's Department of English, Language, Arts, along with Primary and Operations at Clayton State University, will host the second annual Perfect Pitch Competition. The competition will occur on campus in Clayton State. Teens and individuals from each high school have been invited to participate. The district will observe spring break from April 1st through 5th. All schools and all classes will be closed. And finally, the April 4th meeting will be held in the boardroom on Monday, April 8th at 6:00 P.M. Congratulations to the defending state champion, Loveboy High School Lady Wildcats baseball team. Competing in the 6A State High School Basketball Championships, the Lady Wildcats earned the right to play for a second title by defeating Belloska High School 69 to 46. They will face Lanier High School in Beaufort on Saturday, March 9th, at the Makin's Semple. We wish them the best of luck. Congratulations are also extended to the Lady Campers of Forest Heart High School for earning a final four berth. And to the Mondays Mill High Boys teams for making it in this eight, in this year's basketball playoffs. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. That was a lot of announcements. We should, we should, um, and board members, I want to take a personal point of privilege. Don't mind at this time, zero, okay, fair. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that last week, I was invited to, I wasn't at the board meeting on last week, but I was invited to serve on a board that will be here in Clayton County. And the board, what we're doing in Clayton County, what we're doing on the board that I'm serving on is we're going to bring the YMCA back to Clayton County. I'm just going to first take the time to thank our, our staff. The, I just want to say that the video that you all gave showed was extraordinarily just great. When I tell you that, there were some very happy, happy hitters in that room. We had Marcy Overstreet, which is one of the councilmen, one of the city councilwomen from Atlanta. We had Dr. Walter Young in there. Delta was there. And I think Dr. Smith got a meeting out of that, got a meeting with Delta out of that meeting that we had. Coca-Cola was there. And I also want to thank Mr. Gatherbin White. We're going to go and, and move with the YMCA and we're going to start the YMCA at Travelers Baptist Church. And we want to name that YMCA, the Dr. Andy Young YMCA, so we get him to come down here and cut the ribbon. So I just want to thank our staff. Please give our staff a round of applause. Please. Can I tell you that when they saw that video, I was trying to show the 11-minute video, but I went on with the five-minute video. It just set the tunnels. And after that, they were just ready to come on to Clayton County. They saw the great things that we were doing. And you know, we have really shown Atlanta, we've really shown everyone how great we are. So thank you again.
Okay, Ms. Burrows.
This was all listening all together. So Jonesboro High School, Marty Mann, who went to Chicago to participate in the Thanksgiving Parade. I'm hoping that I'll be able to make the trip.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to move on to our approval minutes. Um, Mr. Dog, can I just get a consensus on that? All right. Um, board, I need a consensus to approve the board meeting on favor of the board meeting minutes in February 4, 2019. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Baker.
I believe the consent agenda has passed.
Mr. Christmas. Both board members, both your pleasure at this time. All right, and the motion passes. Eight, uh, eight votes pass. Thank you. Um, before we move on to, all right, next, we want to, we're going to move on to the Policy G Series. Let me clear the board. All right, I'm about to go home too. This thing will light, so keep it moving. All right, next, we're going to move on to the Policy G Series. At this time, I need a motion for the Policy G Series. We're going to convene all students. All right, any motion? All right, Chris, can I get a second?
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
I say, I have a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, Ms. Marie had asked about 10 days, uh, calendar days versus 10. Is this a change in the way I saw it? Okay, just want to check.
All in favor, say aye by raising your hand. Any hands raised? All opposed? Any exceptions? I stand and the motion passes, eight to zero. All right, next, we have the GS, GSBA legislative positions. At this time, I need a motion to, um, whatever you all discussed on last week, I need a motion for that, for your position on that. All right, Ms. Baker.
Uh, Madam Chair, along with that, I would like to add one that I have sent to other board members. If you have not heard on social media, there's been a big push on the internet, especially on YouTube, for programming that looks like cartoons for children. And it looks animated, straight up animated. There's a scarier one out there that's making the news. But there was one that just looked like Saturday morning cartoons. And what I'm asking this group is to ask GSBA to support every school system in Georgia, to write a letter or a resolution to our senators and our representatives, our state senators and representatives, to require the same kind of, um, quality, assurances, standards, and rating systems as we do for our TVs for our children and our movies for our children. These people are coming after our children to do, to dare them to do harmful things to themselves, to others, and to commit suicide. And we have lost children in this county by suicide this year alone and in previous years. And to lose one child by suicide is one too many. And to know that there are And to know that there are predators, and I'm going to call them that, there are predators coming after our children for this purpose, I'm asking that we stand up as a community and say, no, we're not going to take this. And you need to be held responsible if you are going to put this on the elementary children, just as you would for Republican TV. So I ask that we add that to our priorities.
All right, thank you. And so at this time, I need a motion to accept the recommendations for the legislative positions. Ms. Baker, can I get a second? Mr. Christmas. All the people say aye. All opposed? Just raise your hands. So all the people say aye. All opposed? Any opposed, any exceptions? All right, the ayes, the ahs, and the motion passes eight to zero. Next, we will do the GSBA two thousand nineteen delegate and alternate appointment. Julie is the chair and the vice chair that goes. Can we get a consensus on that? Do we need to vote? Let's go.
I believe GSBA would request that.
Do a vote, okay. At this time, I need a motion. All right, and so the motion is that Dr. Anderson, Dr. Ms. Marie will go as the delegate and Dr. Davis will be the alternate appointment. All the people say aye. Any opposed, any exceptions? The ayes, the ahs, and the motion passes eight to zero. All right, next is the GSBA board recognitions. And that is to say if we want to be recognized as an example in the board, can I get a motion on that? All right, Ms. Baker, can I get a second? All right, Ms. Burrows, all the people say aye. All right, any opposed, any exceptions? The ayes, the ahs, and the motion passes eight to zero. All right, next, I need a motion on the Reactor State. A second, all right. All right. Did you hear that? It was, it was Christmas in the second, wasn't it, Justin? All right, all the people say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, any exceptions? The ayes, the ahs, and the motion passes again, eight to zero. All right, well, this is the end of our meeting and I leave as adjourned at seven fourteen. Thank you and have a wonderful night.